Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, hello, I'm on now.
All right. I thought you were gonna be at the ballgame.
Well, listen, I hope to be shortly. I have my Pippin's bag all packed and I'm ready to go as soon as we're done.
Good, all right. Well, hopefully this won't take too long. No pressure, Ryan, no pressure.
Ryan, I had told the Commissioner Anderson last night we were at the ballpark that I was gonna sit on the parking lot on my phone. And I decided that wasn't the best option.
Good evening, Lagon.
Hey, good evening, Ron. Good evening, good evening.
It looks, Patricia, it looks like Lagon's parked in his car, though.
I am. The rumors are true, yes.
Are you in the Pippin's parking lot where I should be?
I am not. I'm actually in a parking lot in Sunnyside. So I can go into a community event as soon as the health board meeting's done, so. So I'm just getting strategically situated. But the Pippin's game sounds like fun.
It will be. Our second player came in today.
Oh, cool, good. What position he played?
I think he's a pitcher. I just talked to him about five minutes when I first got him and then he took off of the ballpark, so.
Well.
I'm picking a pitcher because he's really tall.
I see.
Our first baseman.
Oh, maybe.
So Chase, were you a baseball player?
No, no, I was very unathletic back in the day. I was very young. Yeah.
I bet you were good at math, though.
Yeah, I could, I could do the, do the numbers back then, too, yeah. I just, I remember when I'm back in high school, my, my youth group leader said something that was so true. She said something along the lines like, oh, Chase just looks athletic. He's just, he's actually super clumsy. I, yeah, so I, yes, I was a very awkward, clumsy kid. Kind of came into it a little bit later on, but. Yeah, no.
Well, the good news is, is that people don't really care about that too far out of high school. You know?
Yeah.
It, it does, it doesn't matter so much.
There was a kid a year ahead of me in high school, between his junior and senior year, he grew six inches and he could hardly walk.
Yeah.
So he played center and for basketball, but mostly he just hung around under the basket and somebody threw the ball at him.
My oldest grandson may show up to end up that way. He's, he's thirteen and he's six.
You just lost, we just lost your sound.
Oh, sorry. I was just, I was just saying that my, my oldest grandson is now taller than me. He's six one now.
Wow, thirteen years old, yeah.
Yeah, thirteen. His dad is six seven, so it's not totally surprising, yeah.
Wow.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's the, the Yakima Valley water. I'm a good, I'm a good foot taller than, taller than my dad.
Wow.
Yeah, people are kind of actually surprised when it's like, oh, that's my dad. Oh, really? Like, so much taller.
I'm, I'm the shortest one in my family, men and women.
Oh, really? I guess I didn't know that.
You're shorter than your mom?
Yeah.
And your wife?
Oh, my wife doesn't count. I'm talking about my.
Okay, well, he's at the family.
My side of the family, yeah.
Okay.
My sister was the shortest in the family and she was five nine and three quarters. I'm five ten and a half. My brothers are all six two, six three, and six four.
Wow, it's a tall family.
Yeah. My dad was only six one, my mom was five seven. So he must have had good water in Lemoore, California, when I was growing up.
That was Lemoore, California?
Lemoore. It's actually pronounced Lee more.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, I, okay, well, someone taught me wrong. I'll, I'll, I'll trust you since you lived there.
Well, my, my stepfather's mother, my step grandmother was a school teacher there for fifty years and she corrected everyone who said it wrong. After Dr. Lee Moore.
Oh, I see. Well, it's, it's in central California, I know. It's a big, it's a big farming area. It was a, yeah, it was a, a large dairy area. It was part of that.
Right. Large corporate farms with lots of cotton and melons and vegetables and lots of dairy, yes.
Watching here, you're, you're making me dizzy.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'm gonna sit still now.
Go ahead, Dr. Adderberry.
Oh, no, I was gonna say I'm from Fresno, so that's not too far from the border. My brother was at the Naval Air Station there for many years.
Right, the Naval Air Station was seven miles outside of town and a lot of my good friends were from the Naval Air Station. Actually, most of the squadrons that flew in, um, flew out of NES Lemoore.
Yep.
Did you know Coach Bob Raely?
I don't know that name, no. Where was he coached at?
Fresno State University. Yeah, he started at Lemoore High School and Bob Raely, yeah. When I was, I was running track, he was the track coach.
I was gonna say, when I was in Fresno, there was a, there was a father and son combo that were the coach and the quarterback. It was Kevin Sweetie and I think his dad was named like Bob Sweetie or something like that, but I remember, yeah.
All right, well, how we doing for a forum?
All, all board members are present.
Oh, good, okay. All right, well, we will then, I will call the meeting to order and I will ask Mr. Iwok to do introductions and guests, guests and staff.
Okay, Dr. Flurry.
Here.
Commissioner McKinney.
Present.
Commissioner Lindy.
Do we?
Here. Okay. I was muted, yeah.
Councilmember Byers.
Good evening, I'm here.
Dr. Adderberry.
Here.
Councilmember Duval.
Present.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Yakima Health District Staff Andrea Fresco.
Here, good evening.
Uh, myself, Ryan Iback, Chase Porter.
Present.
Melissa Sixberry.
Here.
William Bravo.
Here.
Tom McGee.
Here.
Nathan Johnson.
Here.
Dr. Bard.
Here.
Jocelyn Castillo.
Here.
Victoria Reyes.
Here.
James Elliott.
Good evening.
All right, well, thank you. We'll move now to our review of submitted public written comments, if we have any, Mr. Iwok.
There are no submitted written comments from public.
Okay, good. Well, we will then move on to unfinished business. And that is selection of the Board of Health Position Number Three, which is the other community stakeholder and Mr. Iwok.
Okay, so we did interview six candidates for the other community stakeholder last week. And this is a two and a half year term for the initial term and then after that it'll be four year terms. And so if we can put the process up on the board. Okay, so the process will be that each position will be determined separately as identified on the agenda. So we'll start out with the, the community, other community stakeholder. There are six candidates for exposition, so there's a minimum of two candidates. For each position will be selected by the Board of Health to move forward for Board of County Commissioner approval and appointment. Board members will be asked in order of roll call which two candidates they would like to select for each position. So the Board members, please be prepared to state your two candidates that you'd like to select. Candidates, candidates receiving the most votes will be the selection of the Board of, of Health for the position. The candidate receiving the next most votes will be considered the alternate selection. Both the selection of the Board of Health and the alternate selection will be referred to the Board of County Commissioners for approval and appointment. And then James, and he has some information to also share.
So, good evening, everybody. We, Jocelyn, if you could put up on the screen, please, the Washington Administrative Code, the new rules two forty-six dash ninety. Keep in mind, Board, that this process you're gonna go through is a full and complete open public meeting related to the discussion of different candidates. This is an opportunity. Oh, you've got a red line version there, okay. Well, that's fine. We can talk about it in the red line version, too. I'll, I'll make sure it's the correct one that we have. This process right now is the selection process done by the Board of Health and this is open for discussion related to, again, we're focusing on first the other community stakeholder position number three, your opportunity for discussion, your opportunity to walk through the different steps or however you want to do it, but then when that discussion process is done, there will be a selection process done, as Ryan just described, will be done at the end of this. I thought it made sense for you all as the board to be reminded of the rules that are related to this selection process. While this isn't a red line format, it looks to me. Yeah, it looks to me. It looks to me like this is the current version of this. I have the current version in front of me, so even though it's red line, this is the final rule in terms of adoption, still waiting for it to go into effect in theory by July first. But the process here, and we're gonna be focused in on subsection number four. WAC two forty-six ninety oh two five is the selection of the non-elected members. Oh, yes, Patricia Byers.
Yes, can we enlarge that slightly, please, like? Once more, thank you.
Thank you, Victoria.
All right, so this, this set of rules is the process by which the Board of Health goes through related to the selection of the non-elected members. That's what we're doing here in both this position and also position four, which will be covered after this. But looking at subsection four, it identifies for you, the local Board of Health shall assess the following when considering applicants for selection to a local Board of Health. So your A through F that are listed on here are the things that you are to assess in considering these applicants for selection. I appreciate that Commissioner Lindy identified one or two of these previously, last time we had the discussion. But just so we're clear on what they are, your subsection A to this is a item to assess and consider is service current or past on other local boards or commissions. The second one is B, whether the applicant's background meets the qualifications of the applicant's selected category or categories. As you know, we have, I believe, two candidates who are eligible for both of the different categories. The third one is potential conflict of interest. This is something that you all as a board are able and definitely should consider and as part of your discussion. D, the applicant's demonstrated commitment to public health. Then E, whether the applicant represents a diversity of expertise and lived experience. I think this is one that Commissioner Lindy had identified last time we were talking about the candidates to be interviewed. And lastly, F, whether the applicant represents a geographic diversity of the community. These are all the items that shall be assessed by you throughout this process and wanted to remind you of these rules and give you encouragement to utilize and to discuss them at your disposal. If there are any questions that you have for me related to these rules before you get into your discussion, let me know.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Elliott? Hearing none, I guess we'll proceed then.
Okay, Jocelyn, can you put up the, the list of names for the other community stakeholder position? Okay, so the other, the top list, the other community stakeholder position will be the, the, the candidates that will vote on first. And so at this point, I don't know if there's any discussion before we move on to the vote.
Any discussion? Hearing none, let's move on to the vote.
Actually, I'm sorry, I have my hand up there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it.
So, I, I guess I just have one concern about whether we are picking somebody who's already in another category. And that relates to the administrator of Austria as a administrator of a healthcare facility falls into the category of providers or healthcare facility workers. And is that an issue if we would then have three people from that category rather than additional stakeholders? And then my other comment is that I, I thought in, in terms of all the people that interviewed, Anthony Maltonato was clearly the most prepared for the interviews. I thought he did an excellent job, has shown experience and proven commitment to public health by his studies. I think he represents a, a component of the community that we do not have represented. I think he would provide a youthful voice and an aspect of diversity and certainly some, some good enthusiasm for the board.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, my hand just raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't see everybody all, all at one time on my screen.
So before we get into the lengthy discussion, I just wanted to publicly state that this was quite a process. And I think that we were all very delighted and pleased with the amount of applicants we had. And just making the first separation on who's gonna be interviewed and who is not was difficult enough. And then after going through the interviews, having to, you know, to kind of go through and fine tune, that was, was very challenging. I feel like the, all of the applicants that we interviewed were, were qualified in different ways and I was just impressed with, with all of them. I just wanted to thank them all very much for applying. So whether you're selected or not, just know that, you know, you're highly thought of in this regard and, and we applaud you for applying. And I, I think my number one choice, and this is the stakeholder cat, category, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, gosh, I had two number one choices. And I'm gonna say the first one was, was Katrina Henkel. And the reason I picked Katrina is because not, not just her, you know, the things that fill in and qualify, but because I, like Commissioner Algren mentioned when we started the whole process, I'm looking for diversity of voices, qualified and yet diversity of voices representing the total community on the, on the Board of Health and as a business person and as active as she's been in the community, but she is an excellent choice. And I'll just leave it there, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Anybody have their hand raised? I can't see everybody at one time here. Hearing none and seeing none, let's proceed.
Okay, so I will, I will go ahead and call out role. And so when I call your name, please state the two candidates that you would like to vote for, for selection for the other stakeholder candidate. What we'll do is we'll put an X when they get a vote and then we'll count up the votes once everyone's done. Let's see, see where we're at. So we'll start with Dr. Flurry.
I would choose Anthony Maltonato as my first choice and Catherine Bambrick as my alternate.
Okay, Commissioner McKinney?
Yes, I have as my first Henkel and as my second Algren.
Commissioner Lindy?
Uh, yes, I have Algren and Bambrick.
Councilmember Byers?
As my first choice, I have Katrina Henkel and as my second choice, I have Algren.
Dr. Adderberry? Um, as my first choice, I had Henkel. And is, I just wanna make certain I'm clear, on the second choice, is this for the other position or is this for the second choice for this position? So every, everyone gets two votes and then whoever has the most votes would be the number one choice by the Board of Health. For this one position?
Yes.
Yeah.
And Dr. Adderberry, you're automatically, the, the second person would become the alternate for this category only.
For this category only, got it. Okay, so I'm sorry, to just be clear, my first choice is Katrina Henkel and my second choice was Stephanie Algren.
And Councilmember Duval?
Uh, my first choice would be Catherine Bambrick and my second choice is Anthony Maldonado.
And Commissioner Anderson?
My first choice is Stephanie Algren and my second choice is Anthony.
Okay, so everyone has voted and looks like Stephanie Algren received the most votes. She would be the candidate moving forward. And then we do have three three candidates that are, received three votes. And so what we need to do is select who the alternate would be. And so what we'll need to do is we'll need a vote between Catherine Bambrick, Katrina Henkel, and Anthony Maldonado, who you'd like to see move forward as an alternate. I'll go ahead. Any questions before we, we move on? So we're only picking between the three alternates? Yes, yes, the ones in blue.
Okay, and if I may, Councilmember Byers, can you see the screen now?
Yes, I can. Thank you for asking, Andrew.
Okay, so Dr. Flurry?
Anthony Maldonado.
Commissioner McKinney?
Uh, Henkel.
Commissioner Lindy?
Uh, Bambrick.
Councilmember Byers?
Katrina Henkel.
Dr. Adderberry?
Katrina Henkel.
Councilmember Duval?
Bambrick.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Anthony Maldonado.
Okay, so it looks like the person receiving the next most number of votes is Katrina Henkel as the alternate.
Okay.
Okay, so Stephanie Algren will be moving forward to the Board of County Commissioners appointment and Katrina Henkel will be the, the alternate. Okay, now we'll move on to the consumer public, or I'm sorry, Commissioner, that's, that's it for that agenda item. Miss Anderson, you wanna move on to the next agenda item?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. We were doing.
Okay, so the next agenda item is voting for the consumer public health candidates and it's the same process. And so at this point, if there's any discussion before we vote, then we can, now would be the time. You wanna have any discussion or are we ready to move on to vote?
No discussion, only that that just, I gotta think about this a little bit because I had Henkel in this position, so I'm taking a minute to rethink things a bit. But go ahead. I'll, I'll, I'll be okay. Go ahead.
So Commissioner, I'm sorry, Ryan and Commissioner Anderson, I'd like to recognize Dr. Flurry as his hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, I can't, I'm, go ahead.
That's fine, thank you, sir.
Um, so I just wanted to say, I, I thought that, you know, when we look at the qualifications as a consumer of public health, well, there was one obvious candidate who had received public health services, who was an obvious consumer and had dealt with a public health issue himself, and that was Nat Wall. And I think he's, would be an excellent, excellent candidate anyway. He's well educated. I think he has a background in statistics. He seems enthusiastic about public health and doesn't bring any particular agenda to the board. I think he would provide a, a new diversity for the board and a desired personal experience in public health.
Thank you, sir. Patricia?
Thank you. So, Dr. Flurry, I want to, to recognize also that I, I believe that about Mr. Wall that he's an excellent candidate for all of those reasons. But I also believe that Mr. Nap is. I feel that he's had some experiences that he could bring some insight to the board. I think would be very helpful. He may seem like an hot choice, it's an effect I've thought about it for a long time, but I just think that his perspective, again, brings some diversity to the board and I feel like he's qualified to do that would be an excellent choice as well.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Uh, I would just comment, Ron, that the candidate, Daleen Ackerman, I, I've known her personally for over ten years. Working as a nurse, working at the, at really the, the spearhead of this pandemic over the last couple of years in the ICU of being alongside patients. I think that that experience is invaluable to measure. And I just, I, I think that her science background as well as her community commitment speaks volumes and the fact that she would want to be part of this board is, is both an endorsement of what kind of person she is, but also I think that her experience really brings to the forefront what it is we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you, Doctor. Patricia?
Yeah, thank you for giving me a sec. I was looking at my list, I just wanted to acknowledge also what Dr. Atterberry has just shared, because she was also, Daleen was also very high on my list. She may have actually been number one, I was kind of looking at my list really quickly, so just want to endorse that as well, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, I just want to clarify with with James that Katrina Henkel is still a candidate for this position, even though she's, her name's moved on to as the other position. They can still vote for Katrina for this position?
That is correct, I I, she has been, she has been identified as the alternate selection for the other community stakeholder. She qualified in terms of a candidate for the consumer of public health. So in theory, she could also be one of the two candidates to get sent to the commissioners as well. So that would not prevent her, I know Commissioner Lindy had made a comment that he had to take her off, that is not the, that is not the case. She is still considered a candidate, she qualified for both positions, so.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, thanks for the clarification.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, let's proceed with the vote.
Okay, so when I say your name, please state which two candidates you'd like to vote for for consumer public health. This is a four and a half year term for the initial term, and then after that will be four year terms. So Dr. Clear?
My first choice would be Nat Wall, and the second choice would be Dr. Nancy Hecox.
Commissioner McKinney?
My first choice is Ackerman, my second choice is Nap.
Nap or or Nat Wall?
Nap, K-N-A-P-P.
Commissioner Lindy?
Ackerman. And Eglet.
Councilmember Byers?
Uh, gosh, my first choice is Daleen Ackerman, and my second choice. Is Mr. Nap.
Dr. Atterberry?
First choice is Daleen Ackerman, and my second choice would be Katrina Henkel.
Right, Councilmember Duval?
Uh, my first choice is Nat Wall, and my second choice is Dr. Nancy Hecox.
Mr. Anderson?
My first choice is Ackerman, and my second choice is Eglet.
Okay, so it looks like Daleen Ackerman will be the the number one choice going to the Board of County Commissioner. And then we did have. It's like four people, and we'll highlight Lou, need a vote for alternate.
Okay, since I'm on my phone, could you name the four, please?
Yes, so Kimberly Eglet, Dr. Nancy Hecox, Randall Nap, and Nat Wall. Okay, so when I call your name, please state which person that you'd like to move forward as a an alternate. Dr. Clear?
Nat Wall.
Commissioner McKinney?
Nap.
Commissioner Lindy?
Eglet.
Councilmember Byers?
Roger Nap.
Randall Nap?
I'm sorry, yes.
Dr. Atterberry?
Uh, Dr. Nancy Hecox.
Nyla Duval, or Councilmember Duval?
Dr. Hecox.
Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, Eglet.
So it looks like the person that voted for Nat Wall. We've got two votes for Kimberly Eglet, Nancy Hecox, and Randall Nap. So we can have that person that voted Nat Wall decide between those other three which person, or we can revote. All members revote, and just those three candidates?
Let's revote.
Okay, so please take Nat Wall off. Okay, so now we'll be voting who you'd like to move forward. The choices are Kimberly Eglet, Dr. Nancy Hecox, and Randall Nap. Dr. Clear?
Dr. Nancy Hecox.
Commissioner McKinney?
Nap.
Commissioner Lindy?
Eglet.
Councilmember Byers?
Randall Nap.
Dr. Atterberry?
I'll take Randall Nap.
Councilmember Duval?
Hecox.
Commissioner Anderson?
Eglet.
Okay, so it looks like. Randall Nap received three votes, so he'll be moving forward as the alternate.
Good, all right. All right. All right, good job, everyone, good job. Went very smoothly.
I wanted to add that I I was very impressed with all of the candidates, I think they would all make good members of this board. And voting for one over the other seemed almost arbitrary in some ways because they all were very good candidates.
I would.
Appreciate all their time.
I would concur with that, Doctor, in that if you look at the scoring, especially from the interviews, it's all of the very close, very close, so. Good to have all of the well-qualified candidates, but it was kind of a tough tough time to make a selection. So I want to, again, thank you, everyone who participated in this, and I hope you continue to be interested in in serving on the, with or through or around the health district.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Has there been a date set for when that appointment will be made at the Board of County Commissioners meeting?
Uh, not that I know of, is one of the other commissioners have a date?
We we have the the agenda item as yet to be put on our Tuesday agenda, but it will, of course, be noticed, and we're probably expecting that to be in the next few weeks.
Okay, and we'll make, we'll make sure that we put that on our on our webpage and social media for anyone that's interested.
Yeah.
I'm sure we can get it done before July 1st.
Yes, if I may, if I may thank the board, not only for their commitment to a long process, but also a very public process. And a recognition, thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for understanding that we are trying to meet the deadline of July 1st. Which in fairness, I believe not every jurisdiction county will be able to achieve. So I'm personally grateful, not only for all of your commitment and for the commitment of our staff, but also that there's so many people in our community who are interested in voluntary public service, because it's quite a bit of work, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions before we move on?
Well, I'll just, I'll just comment that it was very nice to see so many people interested.
Yeah, Commissioner Anderson, if I can recognize that Councilmember Byers.
Yes, I was, yes.
It's okay, I don't mind waiting. I just wanted to thank the staff, because as much work as this was for the members of the board. You know, all of the procedure, all of the setups, all of the preparation, all of the scheduling, is a tremendous amount of work. And I just want to thank the staff for doing a great job, it made it easy for us, not the actual selection, because there's so many qualified candidates, this is wonderful, but made the task easier overall, thank you.
Yes, I concur with that, thank you all very much. Any other comments or questions? All right, well, that portion of the agenda is concluded, we'll move on now to new business. The Governor's Proclamation of 21-14.3, Section 6, and Commissioner McKinney?
I, yes, well, I I have a similar situation to Commissioner Lindy, I am in a vehicle for an event, and my service is is not good. And I apologize, I I was afraid to to make too much comment by, out of fear I would break up, but I I want to share the same sentiments that everyone else just shared. And I would actually make a motion to table this until our next meeting, because I'm not prepared at this point to be able to go forward without connection issues.
Okay.
I get the motion.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Did you make the motion?
No, Commissioner McKinney made the motion.
Okay, uh, yes. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table this issue until next agenda, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 All those opposed? All right, it's been tabled, and we'll move it to the next agenda. A special meeting agenda, I assume, or you want it on the regular?
Next regular, next regular agenda, it's fine.
All right, next regular agenda. Is there any other comments or questions anyone would like to express before we conclude our meeting? Well, that brought out the silent crowd.
Well, I would, Commissioner Anderson, I'll just say, I'll echo some statements of others, and I just want to to thank the the Health District and their staff for for their efforts and and time put into this process. I know Ryan finally sent, I I think he sent out the the scores about 11 o'clock last night, so I, obviously, he was burning the almost midnight oil, so thanks for everybody.
Yes, I do appreciate that, all, everyone. All right, well, everyone, that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, second, second, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Any comment? Any opposed, I should say? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.